Good evening, welcome to the Monday July 13th 2020 Board of the Selection meeting. This is a little different from us for us with this setup. So just bear with us if you can't hear me or any of the other selection, just let us know and we'll, we'll do our best to make sure that you can hear us. I know that the first thing that we're going to be doing is a public hearing for the Board of Health Variants. I'm going to ask that should you have anything to say for the Board of Health Variants? That you come to the microphone, state your name for the record and then speak just one at a time. And then we can go from there. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Grunwald, who's the Board of Health Chair, for the first public hearing on the Board of Health Variants.
Okay, well, open the public hearings for the Board of Health Variants for 13 Island Road Extension. And five pickens left. I'll turn this over to Derek.
Well, starting at the 13 Island Road Extension. So I'll read the brief parts first. Barry, I'm sorry, Cynthia Barry and Donna McHumber.
Are you here? Just raise your hand if you're here.
Yeah, Donna should be here.
Okay.
Michelle G. Robert A. Hughes. Kelly and Jay Hiller. And I apologize in advance, Pamela and Robis Zenepon. I'll turn it over to Niles for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I would normally put this up on the easel, but it's going to blow over so.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's just easier for me to do this just like. For the record, now Zager from Xenon Consulting Engineers here before you for several local upgrades on the property. So just a little bit of history on the property. It's currently, it has a house on it that was damaged by fire. My clients have to rebuild due to that fire. In doing so, they were going to rebuild on the existing footprint. There was issues with setbacks with the building inspector. So we ended up having to re, we had to move this, move the building that was currently on the property to the location that's shown on the plan now. In doing so, that meant we had to upgrade the septic system that is there. Currently, it's just a septic tank into a, into a leaching pit that we are upgrading. So basically what we're doing is we're opposing a 1500 gallon septic tank, which has a, what's called a microfast, it's an advanced treatment unit. So basically because of all the wells that are being affected, there's a, there's several wells, flooding wells due to the size of the lot and also because of the, the proximity to Long Pond, which is a surface water supply. We are opposing this unit because what it does is at the state level, it, it gets all of, it basically treats the effluent to a level that they feel is, is much more manageable. Especially when you have this many wells. So a current standard septic system would just be a tank into a leaching field. This is a tank with a unit inside of it that has the unit that aerates the, aerates the effluent that's in there and better treats it. It goes through a whole filtering system and then it goes out to a leaching field from there. What's called a present environmental system. In doing so, because of the proximity of all the wells and the, and the pond and the property lines and what have you, we had to ask for nine different variants of a local upgrades per site. They are allowed to be granted by the Board of Health. Mainly, the majority of them are just the flooding wells. There are the reduction to the pond as well. There is a five foot reduction to the, I'm sorry. There is a five foot reduction to the foundation just because of the proximity. We're trying to meet all the setbacks of the property lines and what else we can. The leaching field that we're proposing allows for a smaller footprint. So your normal conventional septic system, this reduces it by 40% in size. So we're doing everything we can in order to try to minimize these setbacks. Obviously, we're kind of stuck with what we've got. We, as an upgrade, as a repair, condition, he has to remain at a three bedroom. He's currently a three bedroom. He has to remain at a three bedroom. There will be a, understood that there will be a three bedroom restriction on the property. But currently, my, my owner, the, my client, the property owner, just has, you know, he was living there in trailer and now he's had to, has to be removed from that. So he's pretty much homeless at this point and just looking at the rebuild, what do you have? So I'd obviously be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Just, just for everybody's information, they're looking for the variance with a reduction of the required setback of the proposed leaching field and existing private well water supply from 100 feet to 90 feet. A reduction of the required setbacks between the proposed SAS and the surface water supply from 400 feet to 70 feet. And then reduction of the required setback between the proposed septic tank and the surface water supply from 400 feet to 55 feet. And reduction of the required number of deep holes per disposal area from two to one. Is that correct? So I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. You're looking for the required setback from 400 feet to 70 feet. That's correct.
So the title five on the new construction, you would need to be 400 feet from the pond. So this block, just like all the lots around there would all be unbuildable if they were, if there were not, or not a house or a septic system on the property currently. But because there is, they have the right to upgrade it to a standard that the Board of Health finds is suitable, maximum extent practical. So what, like what I said is that's why we're proposing this unit. This unit is an advanced unit. It has to be, it has to be monitored yearly by a company and they have to submit reports from Board of Health yearly as well.
Derek, have you put any of these on the pond or even?
Something similar about a year ago was done. It wasn't this exact type, but something similar about a year ago.
And we had no issues with that one?
No, they've done a good job maintaining it, so.
Yeah, where was that one?
Where was it, where was it, sir?
That was the one that we, we did on Pickens Ave.
Pickens.
We did a bottomless sand filter, so actually I designed that one as well.
On Long Pond?
Yes.
What was the address, please?
16 Pickens. That was actually, that was actually just as tight of a lot. Yeah, I mean, as you can see, we're, we're getting as far away from the, you know, we had it pretty much crushed up against the property lines. We're just, we're doing the best we can to get it to fit.
How close is the closest well?
About 50 feet.
50?
It's a little bit more than that. It's actually the closest is from our existing, our own well.
Okay.
But then there's, there's other wells that are about, about close to 50, 52 to 53. We usually ask for 50 feet because that's the minimum. And we can, during construction, if something shifts at half a foot, something like that, we don't want to have to come back. So we always give a little bit of room of flight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions? Can you come up to the microphone, please? I know you can.
Bob Cazera residing at 19 Hill Lot 21. A question on the leaching field, he said it was a 5% reduction. I wanted to know what that is in terms of not square footage, but in terms of, you know, 10 feet by, by 12 feet. How big would that be on, on, on the property? Where's the well located on that?
The well is located right here.
So where's the water?
The, where's the pond?
The pond over here.
So this is, so this is Island Road Extension.
I got you.
Here's the pond.
Okay.
Here's the proposed house. This is the proposed leaching field, the tank and the unit, because existing wells currently.
So it's going on the south, southeast corner of the pond?
Yeah, that is correct.
How, how, how big is that leaching field? That was a question, I guess.
The leaching field is, I'll tell you in a second, is 20, 19 by 20.
So on, on the differences to the CMR that you would put me a letter. If we take the property to the south, you're asking for a 50-foot variance from their well. So their well would be in that northeast corner of their property, would it?
Their well is currently right there.
Right in the middle, all right. Now, what about the, what about the one for Barry across the street? That's, it would be 75 feet away?
Just says Barry here, yeah, that, that looks about right.
And what about the?
Uh, yeah, it looks about 75 feet away.
And Hiller would be?
Hiller is right here. We're actually over, it looks like we're over 100 from Hiller.
But there are a lot of wells in that vicinity that are affected by this variance that is seeking.
That's correct.
That's all I have for questions. I think others will speak to it.
Okay. Next.
My name is Rick for Reverend on at 17 Island Road. I'm, I'm 200 feet from him, so then he was asked me to be, you know, spokesman and, you know, I, I do have a, something assigned by, by some of the abutters. I don't know if it's something that you guys want to, you know, look at. And first of all, uh. I'm, I'm 200 feet away, so it really doesn't affect me personally. And Bob, this is certainly, we're, we're, you know, you know, sorry that you have, you had the fire and have to go through all this. It's a terrible experience, so we, we, you know, hard school out to you. You know, they, you know, the name is put together, a, a letter, and if you want to read it yourself, you want to read it out loud here, you know, the undersigned of this letter has submitted testimony, you know, against waiving any provisions or granting variances, blah, blah, blah. We're concerned that any variance and waiver of these state system regulations will present a real threat to contaminating groundwater, you know, water supplies. The variances pose an immediate unacceptable threat. The sewage contamination to the groundwater and the private, private drinking. Also, you know, concerned about the contamination to the pond itself. There's so many issues with that pond right now that many of us are very, very sensitive to, to the pond and, you know, you know. And I guess the biggest thing is the second paragraph says is, there is an alternative and the alternative is, you know, a tight tank and, you know.
The alternative, I can't hear you.
Is a tight tank. The alternative is a, is, is, you know, a tight tank. I know one, one, you know, abutter, I think they, it's 50 feet away from their, their water supply. We would like it to consider, you know, a tight tank and really propose the, sort by the Board of Health to not represent the upgrades. Basically, it's there, but funny, I'll certainly give, give a, you know, a copy to Bob and Sue if you'd like me to, you know, if this led. Okay, okay, because I, you know, I didn't read it verbatimly, but there are, you know, how many variances here are we talking? Nine. Nine of them. Nine of them, you know, I mean, somewhat aligned. When you hear the number nine, why do we have, you know, rules and regulations if we're going to have variances for manageable?
Derek, should you address this question?
Um, it is a lot of variances. I agree with that. A tight tank is a very last option, so.
A successful one, a very successful. Okay, guys, listen, we're going to speak one at a time, okay? Don't speak out of turn. If you want something to say, you're more, I'm more than happy to have some. I just want to hear everybody and it's kind of hard to hear with these on as well. So I just want to make sure that everybody's recognized appropriately. Go ahead, Derek.
So again, the tight tank is the very last option that would be allowed. If there wasn't any kind of system that could be installed, then a tight tank would be what your option is. If the state saw a set of plans that fit criteria, that's what the state would probably tell you to do. No, it's a lot of variances and I definitely don't love it. And if it was a new construction, it probably wouldn't be happening. But on a repair, when you're dealing with what we have now, which is a leach pit, unfortunately, this might be your best option. It, it's not the ideal answer by any means, but.
Derek, did I understand you to say that this solution would be what the state would recommend?
The state wouldn't recommend a tight tank. So if there was, if, if you have no other options but a tight tank, then that's what we'd get. If they saw a set of plans that fit the criteria and unfortunately with variances would fit, then that's what they would recommend.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As well, just to go off of that a little bit, I just want to make it clear that if any of the abutters, and I understand your concerns, but if any of the abutters come in for septic repairs, a septic upgrade, they're going to be in a lot of the same issues. They're going to have a lot of the same issues. It's not just, it's just not my client. A lot of them around here are going to have those same issues. So they're going to be, if one person needs a tight tank, then a lot of them are going to need tight tanks when they need to upgrade. So that's the problem, you know, and I, and I agree, tight tanks are, like, a tight tank is really not meant for a year-round use. It's not. It's meant more for seasonal use. They currently live there year-round or have been living there year-round for 30, 40 plus years, whatever it is. They want to live there year-round. I mean, it could be a huge financial burden to have somebody on a tight tank. So and there's, there's currently septic systems around there that are not even close to the same treatment that what we're providing, you know. So the treatment that we're providing is above and beyond what. Most people there, most of the abutters, they just have a standard conventional septic tank into a leaching field with no treatment at all. So, so I want to make that very clear. I'm not saying that their concern shouldn't be heard, but I just want to make it clear that what we're doing here is by far above and beyond what is around, is surrounding area. And rightfully so, it should be, because it's not that. It's not warranted. It is warranted because of all the setback issues and what have you. And Derek is, and Mr. Macedo is absolutely correct. If this was a new construction lot, this would be an unbuildable piece of property. It would, it absolutely would. Just the 400 feet alone that you would need to get from the pond would make this, and the majority of the lots around there, unbuildable. But it, the fact is, is that they have houses there, they had them there for years, they have to have the ability to upgrade them. So that's what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Would you consider putting this off for, to the next meeting? So, I mean, personally, I'd like to educate myself on this. This is new to me and I don't fully understand the issues.
All right, we can, we can talk about that among us, but let's finish this thing too. I realize that this is probably what script you would, you know, state in the law.
My question is, is I'm representing my sister Pamela Glades. She wants to know where that 50-foot buffer to the pond is? If it was possible to do a little bit of an L shape so that it goes close to her property line? Just change that, instead of straight across to the pond and have a curve around, which give her a little more protection? This is paradise. This is pond, that's right. That's her from the pond, 50 feet.
This is the 50 feet from the pond right here.
Yeah, this is my sister's lot.
Yep.
Is it possible that this could be L-shaped a little to give them a little bit more security along the property line?
Can what the L shape?
The buffer, the buffer.
That buffer is an existing buffer. We can't touch that. That's just the, from the existing pond. So that's just the, that's just the buffer.
I was under the understanding that if there was less than five feet, you could build a buffer or something.
No, not, you know, the, the buffer is, the 50-foot buffer is existing from the pond.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah.
So is it a material buffer? More sand, more gravel, more what? Less sand, less sand, you know, what is the buffer made out of?
There's no buffer made out of it. It's just a setback. It's just a setback from the pond that we are showing.
Okay.
Where it is, it's just in relation on the plan so that people can have a pictorial of how far it is in relation to what we're doing.
I might be wrong about this, but it was my understanding that a buffer can be placed in some sort of material between the property line and the variance area if it's within five feet of the property line.
I, I think she means like if, if we were to build a building and we had to have a setback of 75 feet, she wants a buffer within like a certain amount of space so she doesn't have to. I don't, I'm not saying eight feet or whatever. She wants a buffer of her own sort, you know, like a, a tree line or a buffer.
I talked to someone that worked in the field and they said that they do buffers like that, some sort of material buffer underground, not a buffer.
Right.
And that's what I, if they do this.
I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to that, so.
We could put a, you can put a, a rubber liner along the property line that goes in the ground, but they're only about five feet deep. I mean, these, the wells alone are usually 100 plus feet deep, you know, if not more.
And that might have been what they were talking about.
It could be, and I apologize, I'm not, I was just not. But a liner could be put, but I don't think that's going to.
Help anything?
Help anything, no.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I mean, but it's something we can, we can talk about, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Cazera.
Since Donna McHumber couldn't make it and she met with a lot of the other people that are.
Donna Spear, Bob, Donna Spear. Can I just have, can I, you have, Donna?
Well, did you, I was going to speak for you, but basically what I'm saying is a lot of.
You are a resident, right?
I reside there. I'm a resident in Ubedford. My wife's a property owner. We have been for 36 years.
It's not that we don't know who you are. So that's why I'm asking the question. I want to make sure that everybody here understands as well.
They are expressing their concern, the number of variances, they don't represent upgrades. Maybe technological upgrades, but they don't represent upgrades. They're representing exceptions to the rules that the state is putting forth in terms of the 100-foot setbacks despite the lots of the land. The concern is with the threat of a sewage contamination to the groundwater that would affect all their private drinking water supply. That's the concern and that's why they're saying, look at an alternative. One alternative that was put out, I believe in that letter, talks to tight tanks, but there may be others. But clearly, on an undersized lot, shrinking the, the leaching field and all the other concepts and trying to sell it as technology still poses very real concerns to nearly a handful of properties that are within a stone's throw. We're, we're furthering off, so, and it goes up, so it's a little bit different. But for the ones that aren't here, that were the abutters that received notice, they're very concerned about the sewage contamination to the groundwater. Gets in there, it's going to happen. And then the, the pond itself, there are enough issues with, with, with the pond. So you look at the fact that the house, the structure that's standing out is relatively small and, you know, I'm sure a tight tank or some other system that would not threaten the, the groundwater. That's the real issue that they all have. Speak to neighbors to the south, to the east and to the north. So I just wanted to kind of underscore that and it's all put in, in, in that letter. But, you know, I, I think that there's got to be an alternative to just presenting a, a leaching field on an undersized lot that's going to threaten the, the nearby wells. Not to mention what could happen to the, to the, to the pond. I don't know where everything is situated on the property. So I just wanted to underscore that.
Can you copy that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let me just review this again. Can you just talk about the safeguards that you have put in to ensure as best you can that this will not contaminate groundwater or pollute the pond any further?
Okay, of course. So, so this, this unit, this microfast unit is a, it's a, it's like a pre-made unit, pre-fab unit that goes into the septic tank. And we've done, I've done thousands of them and they work very, very well. As a company, out of rain, hand, that is, what's called wastewater treatment systems. And they're very good. They take care of the, they take care of the whole system. There has to be a contract. And basically what happens is that, that unit gets put into the septic tank. So normally, your, your normal conventional septic system is a 1500 gallon septic tank, which just basically all the effluent goes into, the solid settle out. It goes into the leaching field, which is really not much of a settling factor. And the majority of the treatment is done within the soil after the leaching field. Once it reaches into that leaching field, it goes into the ground and it creates that back, it creates that bacterial environment. So that's basically what happens. That's your conventional and that's what pretty much every one of the abutters has at the compound.
Okay, stop. So Derek, you're saying that the state would agree with this before it making a property owner go to a tight tank?
If the state saw this set of plans, they would probably say that this is what they would go with for a tight tank. Because they, the state has deemed a tight tank the last option.
Tight tank, I, I drew tight tanks as, again, as a last option. We've given a lot in Lakeville and Freecamp, not in Freecamp, but I haven't done many in Freecamp, but typically in Lakeville. And even the Board of Health there absolutely hate them in tight tanks. From one, the pumping, there, there's leaking. This doesn't have a water table issue per se. We're way up in the pond. That's another thing I'd like to say is that we're way up in the pond. Most of the, a lot of the properties along Long Pond are down at pond level, high water table. So treatment becomes an issue. Situation like this is beautiful quartz sands and gravels, which is a, which is a great treatment filter as well. So we're treating it pre-treatment, prior to even getting in there significantly. So, so there's a, there's a lot of safeguards on that end that we're, we're providing that the normal conventional would not. Tight tanks have many problems with leaking. We do the best we can to provide monolithic tanks and that, you know, these one paws instead of two, two paws with no seams. This, it's concrete, they still leak. They can still leak, just like any other septic tank.
So any, anybody's septic system here could leak at any time and contaminate anybody else's well or, or the pond as well.
And I wanted to make it clear that the majority of their wells are within, within 100 feet of their own septic system and others. So it's not just ours. Ours isn't the only one. I'm not saying that this is the ideal situation, but we're working with what we have. And I feel as though as an engineer, it's my job as an engineer to make sure that I provide the best suitable alternative for the property and for my client and make sure it's protecting the environment. So I've done these many a times. I've had, in Lakeville, I've had properties, actually the one in, the one on Pickens Ave that we came from Ubedford, I believe that had like 11 or 12 different variances in it. So it's not that this is the first one liking.
Almost there.
Thank you.
Almost there.
Go over again, all right. Go ahead.
Could it be possible that he could explain how pre-treatment, how the microfast works rather than just saying it's a pre-treatment? How it works? So maybe the, the buddy neighbors could understand what the pre-treatment does and why it allows the system to be diminished in size rather than, it's a pre-treatment could be just a pizza cheese block and that's pre-treatment. If he could explain how that mechanism works in reducing the load on the septic system.
So, no problem, that's, that's absolutely fine. So, so what it, what it does is that, oh, okay, sorry. So, so what this microfast unit does is it has a blower unit. It has a unit that goes inside the septic tank and it has a unit and it has a blower unit. And one of the biggest things for, for an environmentally like, for, for it to, to, to be a good treatment, it needs air. That's one of the most important things for these bugs to act, to, to work properly and to survive. So what this does is it has a blower unit on it and this blower unit all is, is basically always blowing air through the system, okay? And then what it does is it takes that effluent after it's been treated and then it recirculates it back through and does it again. Okay? So all you're basically doing is you're taking the environment up for all the bugs and you're enhancing it from what you're. Normally, your treatment is supposed to happen in the septic tank, which nowadays all the, any bacterial soil. in the septic tank, which nowadays all the antibacterial soaps and things of that nature that we're putting that, especially nowadays, these things are things that are really not prohibited, not prohibited far at all, they're very, very bad. Um, this, what this basically does is it allows it to just keep aerating it, aerate, aerate, and that's one of the most important things. Without getting into too technical terms, the blower unit is in the venting of it, so there's also gonna be a vent, which we put on pretty much every septic system now, nowadays anyway, I know people hate seeing what they call the canyons, but these, these things have a unit of, of vent which just allows that circulation of air more freely, uh, and it, and it's just a much, much, much better treatment. And again, the, the, there is, the, these things can fail, there's, it's just like a pump system, anything, it has mechanicals in it. That's why it has to be under contract, it has a company that is, is under contract, so.
Is, go ahead, is the blower unit run by electricity?
Yes, it is.
We're always getting power outage or something.
Yeah, no, I understand that, so, so that, the, the idea is that it has to be on a generator?
Is that in your proposal?
I believe so, yes, yeah.
We're getting a generator, yeah, it's in the, it's in there.
It's under the contract, is it registered with the, with the town that?
The com, the com.
Every, every year, no matter how title passes to the property.
I, I can approve the certificate of compliance until I have a contract in hand, that's part of the stipulation of issuing the certificate of compliance.
And then you have to maintain it, you have to, they have to maintain it with the town, or is it only a one-year, one contract?
No, when the contract gets renewed, they'll submit it again.
This is something new, in terms of a, a regulation and?
This, this technology is somewhat new, I mean, it's not super new, but this technology is somewhat new, so, yeah, it's not, it hasn't been on the books for twenty years, it is somewhat new that when you're gonna do any kind of innovative technology, a contract has to be signed into, and it, the records get stored at the board out. Above a pump, uh, a pump chamber, they don't have to be under a contract, it's usually above that, like something like what they're talking about.
So if, if, if the town has a contract to a certain date in the six five, does the town have the means to?
I can follow up on that.
And, and to make sure that they have it on the, to?
I can follow up on that, absolutely.
So, so just so you understand, the company that is contracted, if they are terminated under a contract by the homeowner, they have to give proof of notice to the Board of Health, so then the Board of Health is made aware.
So can I ask you another question? Um, the, the cost of the system and of the contract, what, what, what would be like an average?
Just this unit, just this unit alone, just this unit alone to buy is about eight thousand dollars, eight to ten thousand dollars, then they have to have it installed.
The maintenance of that contract.
A lot of the septic systems in the area probably cost that, the whole, the whole septic systems.
What, what if, what, like, if, if you have to pump a septic tank with maybe a thousand, it might cost you two hundred, a thousand gallons, maybe cost like two hundred dollars, what, what would a contract, what, what would that cost to, to maintain that contract?
To maintain this contract? For a year, yearly?
Yeah.
I don't know for sure, I believe it's within a couple hundred dollars. But you have to understand with, if you're, if you're going back to the whole tight tank idea of pumping, um, usually the use is at least, you're gonna go through it at least every two, two weeks, so if you're spending two hundred, you're gonna be spending five, six hundred dollars a month just in, just in pumping.
Thousand dollar tank, a thousand gallon tank?
No, it's a fifteen-hundred gallon tank, a tight tank. Actually, I'm sorry, actually, so tight tanks are a two-thousand gallon minimum, so you have a two-thousand gallon.
You're not, you're pumping out the solids in, in a, in a tight tank?
You're pumping out everything. Cause it has no way to go, it's just a big down, it has, it's a tight tank, so you have to pump it twice, you probably, on average, you pump it twice a month, let's say. It's two hundred fifty dollars, it's five hundred minimum per month, so you're talking six thousand dollars a year?
Based on, based on how many people live in, in, in a?
Again, you could go by, are we doing laundry, are we not doing laundry, it's a financial burden, it is, absolutely.
Are, are there any con, just one other question, are, are, are there anything that says that you, you could take a, a washing machine and put it into a, a different kind of, um, of groundwater to like, um, just bleach?
You can't, you can't, you have to basically build another septic system basically the same size, the new, so new Tuttah Five did allow that, but you have to basically build a new type, a new system, we obviously don't have the room, we don't, we, we, we barely have enough room just to be able to fit what we add.
But this system, the homeowner is locked in, whoever the homeowner is, to, to having to put, have a contract on record with the town?
That's what I said, yes, that's correct.
For as long as it's there?
That's correct.
At, at approximately probably a couple hundred a, a year?
Again, I can't answer that question, I don't know the, I don't know the cost of it.
I just asked, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that, I haven't heard anything about that, so that's why I asked.
All right, um, so, uh, George wants to read, I don't have any other questions, um, good to go.
It's a lot of information here, I'd like to sound better for tradition.
I, I don't hear anything else, do I?
I don't hear anything else, but.
Yes, I am, I am, all right, so through the Board of Health Chair, I'll make the motion to approve, um, the variances as proposed, um, accordingly, um, by the Board of Health Agent and by, um, the engineer, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, 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 one, one more thing, uh, the woman that wanted the rubber lining, right here, hi, if you could just speak with Derek about that, um, after you talk to your sister, that would be fine.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna do the hearing for Nine Pickens Lane with one green card, Pamela Sharkey and William Ross. Uh, SFP Engineering Company?
My name is Brad Fitzgerald, SFP Engineering, we're project engineers, this is a septic system over there. We got existing one bedroom house at Nine Pickens Avenue. The current system is kind of out in this low area in the middle of the lot, you see, it has an existing septic tank here. We're proposing to revitalize plumbing a little bit, come up, uh, bring it over here, we're gonna get this septic tank more than fifty feet from our own well, that's the only well that's close to, uh, it's got the fifty feet from the, then we're proposing a leaching area up here in the corner. With the leaching area, we've got, uh, requesting local upgrade to allow leaching area to be ten feet from the existing crawl space in the house, except twenty. Sixty feet from our own well, seven hundred, eighty feet from the abutting well to the south of Lawson Sharkey, and also that the, uh, septic tank kept more than three feet of cover because of the existing plumbing. With this, with this plan, we believe that, uh, the new leaching area is a little bit further away from the Sharkey well than the existing one is now, it's a little bit further away from our own well than the existing one, we've got a hundred feet from any other well in the area. You know, to meet our property line setbacks, so the only, as I said, the four, four local upgrades, uh, separation from the crawl space, cover over the tank, and the setbacks from the two banks.
Okay, um, the Board of Health Chair, I think we'll have him to approve. Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have closed a couple hearings, and we are on to our regular agenda. Okay, we have a, um, petition from Horizon and N-Star to, um, relocate two poles, um, eleven dash twenty and eleven dash twenty S on Brayley Road, and this is because of the, um, upgrades to, uh, the realessness, do you have a motion to? Do you have a second? Uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, Cable Advisory, um, update, David?
Okay, um, uh, I have, uh, attached in the agenda packet, a, a list of, uh, things that the Cable Advisory Committee has been discussing relative to, uh, the upcoming contract with, uh, the cable, Comcast Cable. A list of those things is attached and identified specifically, and I can't comment on it for a moment. I guess the, the question would be, are there any, is there anything in that list that might be objectionable to the board? Uh, we did have a Cable Advisory Committee meeting today, we've decided to increase the original request for, um, the, um, expansion of the, um, police station and potential studio from a hundred thirty up to two hundred thousand dollars. Um, all of the things that are on that list, such as, uh, requesting a high-def channel, uh, asking for an additional, uh, public access channel, uh, increasing the user fee from one to two percent, uh, that all of those things will generate some income that will allow us to basically over the course of, you know, the next ten years, uh, have a cable system and a way to, uh, potentially have a studio either at the high school, the elementary school or somewhere else in town, as well as have the police station fully equipped in terms of being a, a meeting room with cameras and that kind of thing. Uh, we're asking for a five percent discount for the seniors, although technically they can't allow that, I guess there's a side letter agreement that we, they have entered into with other communities. Um, the final thing regarding the transmission was an issue that had been brought up, it's not so much a contract negotiation issue as uh, an, an, an issue that needs to be addressed regardless of whether the contract is this year or ten, five years from now, that there seems to be a transmission problem down, um, at Bay Shores, so. If the board has any other, uh, items that they would like to add to that, we, we, we're also asking to drop some municipal buildings, though we're not sure they can technically do that, but all of the things that, uh, that are listed, uh, on, uh, the proposal are things that, uh, every community, uh, has, at one time or another, you know, they've tried to negotiate and have bored negotiated, so. Uh, we're gonna have our first negotiation session on, uh, Wednesday at five o'clock. Yeah, a copy of the, their proposal from Comcast was forwarded on to all the board members, they're basically asking for a ten-year contract, they offered sixty-five thousand dollars, which, you know, they're looking at other communities, a comparable size is not adequate as far as we're concerned, and, uh, we're looking to, like I said, have a, a program that we can do local programming, have a studio of some sort, have cameras, and be able to do a lot of things that other communities are doing, like Lakeville and Middleborough and communities like that.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Um, I don't have any questions, the only thing, um, well, I guess I have one question, have you compared the capital funding requests of other towns from?
Yes, we have, actually, we discussed that today, actually, we're on the low side, and that's one of the reasons why we're making the request for the two hundred.
I wouldn't even mind going up to two fifty, because they can always come back and say two.
Yes.
You know what I mean, like, so if, if we feel like we're on the low side, I don't mind increasing whatever we ask for.
And that's part of the ten years, so it's only, if it's not really two fifty upfront, they give you twenty-five thousand a year, so, uh, I would have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I, whatever you're comfortable with, I just feel like you're talking ten years, it's peanuts, and every year cable goes up and we get less, so I don't care if we go for the whole pot of gold at that point.
All right, I will make that recommendation.
All right. All right, you don't need a vote from us, do you?
Sorry?
You don't need a vote from us, right?
No, I just wanted to let, the funny thing about this whole negotiation is that it's not a traditional negotiation that, um, you know, you don't like put all your points together and then you present it, they're, they can watch the meeting in it, so they know exactly what we're asking for, it's kind of a.
You can make it perfectly clear, we're asking for a lot. We intend to get it.
All right, yeah, they've been warned.
All right, um, look, if you don't ask, you don't get it, and I think that, uh, a ten-year contract, I don't even know why we're doing a ten-year contract.
Yeah, we could actually, that's another thing, do you wanna say what, look at five?
I would look at five as well, ten years is a long time, and anything can happen during that.
To keep the same price for ten years.
Yeah, so cable goes up, we get less, you know what I mean, like, so, uh, yeah, I would, I would say a five year.
It's gonna, it's gonna be really interesting in the next few years, because five G is coming, and that's a wireless, uh, kind of thing, it's so, it's, uh, Horizon, all of those companies, and the, and the speed of the bandwidth is actually faster than cable or FiOS, so there's gonna be new player in towns, we go on in the next, you know, three to five years, it's gonna be competition.
Right, okay. Um, tie the increase into our annual fee, so if their increase goes up, estimate percent?
Well, that's a two percent, it depends upon how many subscribers a subscriber base pays, so it's based upon the, you know, how many subscribers you have, that that's what the fee involves. The capital fee, which is a two fifty, that's like a, a, a amount of money that's given to you by the main company, basically to say, all right, for capital, for cameras, studios, the, the other fee, the user fee, can be used for like, uh, to pay like a teacher, we wanted to have a teacher and have, we decided to put our studio in, in a school, uh, have a teacher there, we could pay the amount, it's a, we, we've got a revenue receipts account where we would draw down next amount of dollars each year, pay a teacher to teach the students how to operate a cable from then and all of that.
Okay, all right, I, I suggest if anybody else has any other recommendations, just email them to David and we'll go from there. All right, uh, town administrator hiring process. Okay, so I, I've gone through several of these hiring processes, so I guess like the first question is, um, do we, I mean, especially not knowing where we are financially, cause we don't have our, we still don't have a budget yet, so where are we going with this? Um, A, do we want to hold off on hiring a town administrator, do we want to move forward with hiring a town administrator? And then the third part is, if we do want to, how do you want that process to go? So I've been on a screening committee with the entire board and department heads, and that's an open process, so, um, it's an open process for the applicant, um, it's an open process of people who have to come in and watch, um, you know, sometimes, uh, people, uh, or, uh, applicants don't want to because it's an open process, right, and they, they don't, they didn't tell their town, so.
That seems like the one word, in a practical way, I understand the idea behind it, but.
Right. Right. So there, that's one process, the other process that I've been a part of is having no, um, selectmen and just having a screening committee narrow it down to three people, and then have the board do the three people as almost like a final. You know what I mean, so then that way, the board would be hands-off until that last, that last time, so there are, I mean, I don't think, I, I think that if we are going to do this, um, I was planning around like dates today, um, that we could advertise if we were gonna do this nine one to nine thirty, right, for that whole month, and then ten one to ten seven, review the applicants, have that third week in, um, October for interviews, and then the fourth, the last week in, um, October, the board could interview, and then we could have somebody on board between the first and the fifteenth of November. Um, I, I don't know, it's, I'm just putting it out there, we do have, I mean, we could think about all this and make a recommendation at our next board of selectmen's meeting, um, we just don't know, is, is that, would that be one of the areas that would be first? We just don't know, is that, would that be one of the areas that would be first cut if we had budget cuts? I don't know, you know? So those are things to think about.
When do you have budget cuts for this town?
No. No, but I think that if we're going to do this, we probably, I mean, first of all, the advertisement is already basically done, because we've done it a couple of times, and it's by law, so you can't really change what you're looking for to really set by law.
Can you use like a third-party company to try to help with the recruitment process possibly, or is that?
It's going to cost you anywhere from eight to fifteen thousand dollars, just so you know that.
Yeah.
And the beauty of the consulting company is, number one, it takes politics out of it. They're, you know, they're an independent body, they usually have a screening committee. They usually require that the first interview is an executive session, so the thing is, is that you want to attract applicants that are qualified for the position. As I was telling someone today, it's a very small pool of people that actually lose kind of work. So you're going to get either someone who's ready to move on to some reason. Number two, somebody who's never been in the field. In that situation, you have potentially somebody that is going to be learning on the job, which I don't think is ever a good thing. Or you're going to be in a situation where you're, the applicants that are going to apply are going to be looking at the community, are going to look at it and say, oh geez, I'm in the field right now, I'm making X amount of dollars. It has to be a step up. So if it's a step up, there are a lot of other jobs out there that potentially could pay more. So you're already screened down your pool a little bit. Number two, the resources of a consulting company, they know people in the field. The people that do the consulting have worked doing these types of, you know, screening committees and all of that thing. They know applicants, they can call people, you know, and send, in fact, I get emails from other companies that, you know, am I interested in X, Y, and Z job, I'm not interested, but I still get those, because they know that there's a certain pool out there that is available and whether they'd be willing to move. There's a whole bunch of things that are going to it. My only concern, and I've expressed this a couple of times, is that I don't think there's a lot of time here. So if your goal is to have somebody onboard, you've got to get going now, because it takes, you know, a good four, five, six months to get somebody onboard. You may go through this whole process, get it down to three applicants. Two of the applicants say, well, you know, I'm comfortable where I am. I don't want to jump out of the pan into the fire. Or their boards may come back and say, geez, you know, we really want you to stay, and what would it take for you to stay? And now you're down to one applicant, and that may not be the applicant that you really want. So you've got to be prepared for that also. Not to be a negative spin kind of guy, I'm just telling you all of the things that I've learned over the years. And I've been on both sides of that. I've been in those situations where, you know, I had to make a decision, and it was at a situation where I wanted to, because every community is different. And, you know, some communities are easier to manage than others, and it's a perception of the community and how the manager's view relative to the amount of pay that you're willing to offer to get that type of management that you want.
So it's kind of hard to say that we could afford to do a firm, because we don't have a budget.
Yeah. No, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
No, no, I'm just saying like, that's one thing that we really have to take into consideration. Like, the state has not finalized the budget, and we don't even know. Like, are we making cuts or not making cuts? Like, we have no idea, so.
Can we, I agree with David. I think getting a consulting firm to work with us would probably be very helpful.
I disagree, but that's okay. I've been through five of these, and hired four superintendents and five town administrators. So, I mean, the consulting firm is just going to tell you what you know about your town, what you're looking for. And I think that our department heads, Carlton and Fire Chief, they know what they're looking for as well. You know, I just something to consider, and I think that we do have time. I don't think we're in a rush. I mean, you know.
I'm okay with whatever you guys decide. I'm just telling you, having been, as it served as an interim at another community, that said, oh, we can do it in four months, and a year later I was still working there. They had gone through the process twice and got up to the point of where they were going to offer the job and everything felt hard.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, like, if it falls apart, the town doesn't necessarily fall apart. So, but I think whatever you guys want to do, but maybe we should just, maybe we should get some direction from the state to see when they're going to finalize their budget, and we'll have more of an idea of what we're going to have for money.
Yeah, makes sense.
Now, with the.
Yeah.
So one other thing, I noticed like in this walk-in job, you know, it requires like, you know, five previous years' experience in at least following roles, town manager, assistant town manager, town administrator, or assistant town administrator. Do you think that might narrow our field a little bit too much for people that have? Like, I'm thinking there might be other things that would also be sent to the call-out in this, but do, you know, any reasonable person? It is a vital. So there's no, this is a conversation on one time.
Yeah, no, no. So it does, I think if you read the wording, there is some leeway for the board. And speaking with town council before about something, there is some leeway. What is five years' experience? What does that stem from? So there is, there is some, more or less some leeway in that. So just, you know, to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Personally, I would, if I, if I was in your position, I would prefer to have somebody that's actually worked as a town administrator. Granted, there's a certain set of skills that you can carry, like I have a business degree, you know, masters of business. That sort of prepared me to do a whole bunch of things, and I've done, worked in the private sector, I've worked in the public sector. But the public sector is definitely different than the private sector.
Yeah.
Security laws, the general laws, the environment, the open meeting laws, a lot of things you can do in the public sector. You can make a business decision in three hours in private sector.
I was thinking like, if there's someone who was like counsel, you know, for, you know, they were probably.
Oh, yeah, yeah, a lawyer.
Things of that nature, or like even a CPA, or like someone, you know, who's familiar with this stuff. I don't want to shut the doors, but you know. But that's.
All right, so let's get some direction from the states, see how much time we have, what's available for funding, and then we can go from there, we can make a decision from there. Okay, perfect. All right, next, transfer request. So we'll, go ahead.
Before we continue, we do have one additional one. It's for the legal department. It's three hundred and eighty dollars from the transfer, from the reserve fund, before I forget.
All right, so we're going to take these in two, okay? We'll take the reserve fund transfers first, and then we'll do the interdepartmental second. So, sorry. All right, so there's a reserve fund transfer. Now, this is not from our, the town reserve fund, this is from the water seaver's reserve fund. The amount of the request is fifty thousand dollars. The balance in that account right now is forty, the balance in there is minus five thousand. So that would leave them with a balance of plus forty-five. And that is to pay sewer bills from the city of Ulverver due to the unforeseen circumstance and increase. That's from their own reserve fund, again. The second reserve fund transfer is for the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. This is for single-stream recycling. We're averaging about twenty percent more in curbside with volume due to everybody being home, maybe more people are recycling because they're working from home. I don't have the answer to that question. The second one is in the amount, or the third one, in the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars. And this again is to pay the final bill for FY twenty. Again, twenty percent increase in curbside recycling due to COVID. And then what was the other one, Tim? Three hundred and fifty dollars?
Three hundred and eighty dollars.
Three eighty, eighty-five?
For the legal department from the reserve.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve these, or does the board have any questions about these reserve transfers?
No questions.
Do I have a motion to send this off to the finance committee?
Question granted.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, interdepartmental transfers. The first one is for the police station. The amount requested is eighty-eight hundred coming from transferred, from port to supplies. The second one is in the amount of five hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. And this is going from salary wages for the planning technician to wages for the planning technician, or overtime to wages for the planning technician. The next one is a total of one fifty-three oh nine, and that's from the cemetery car. Here, it's coming from salary and uniforms, and it's going into cemetery here.
What uniform are you talking about?
The cemetery has, the cemetery people, the people that work, they have a uniform line? I didn't know that either until I read it. All right, the next one is, amount requested is eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, and that is going from town accountant repair and maintenance of equipment to wages for the assistant town accountant. And the last one would be in the amount of two twenty-nine sixty-eight, and that is coming from the Medicare insurance penalty and going into Medicare. Do I have a motion to approve these interdepartmental transfers?
Question granted.
Do you have a second? On favor? Aye. All right, next, road opening permit for one seventy-eight South Main Street. Property is adjacent to the Stop and Shop Distribution Center, across the street from Brighton and Lumber, and it's just about one and a inch away, so they need just a street contact.
Motion made.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, agreement with Pitney Bowes for the town hall posted need or lease and service agreement. Do I have a motion to approve?
One, I was reviewing the contract today, and the bid had come in through building, the building department, and they had, in the contract was forty-eight months, and they can't enter into a contract for forty-eight months. They only, they can't enter into a contract greater than three years. So they're revising their proposal and will have it on the next agenda. Oh, she gave it to us?
Yes, I know it did.
Oh. Was it the same, was it the same amount of money? Anything greater than three years request?
Yeah, this one's a three-year agreement, billed quarterly at two fifty-five twenty-four.
Do I have a motion to approve with the new amount? All right, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Ward Fire Station, number one, door bid in approved contract, recommendation from Promet Equipment Company. The proposal is in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-five.
That's actually the project cost, total cost?
Right.
The Promet portion of it, twenty thousand four hundred, yeah.
But do we have to approve the whole project cost?
This is just specifically for this contract. The contingency is in there also, and then the architectural.
So why don't we just approve the same thing, but I'll spell out exactly what we're doing, so that way everybody knows. Acquae Waterproofing Company in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Promet Equipment Company in the amount of twenty thousand four hundred dollars, contingency thirty-nine six hundred. Architecture line and engineering fees nine thousand dollars as approximate for a total project cost of one thirty-seven nine eighty-five. Do I have a motion to approve?
Question granted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The next is change order number two for Conroy and Associates. As you know, these COVID-related extensions and has resulted in Conroy being here longer than anticipated. Again, we are hoping to get this money back from, some of this money back from COVID. We still have a hefty contingency fee, and this doesn't change from the last time that I told you about the contingency. That was already in there, so we just need a motion to approve. The total contract price will go to four thirty-eight from three ninety. The change is the forty-eight thousand dollars.
Forty-eight thousand. Motion made.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at our last meeting, we talked about the FLAA and reminding them of their cleanup duties. We said that we would talk about it at this meeting and make a motion to extend them such a letter. I think we all read the letter, it speaks fine to me, what do you think?
Same time, yeah.
Is he good to it? All right, do I have a motion to send the letter to FLAA, reminding them of their cleanup responsibilities? Do you have a second? All right, on favor? Aye. All right, timeline for the Fall 2020 Special Town Meeting. David or Tim, you want to talk to this?
So basically, if we're planning on having a special town meeting in October, we need to get moving on that pretty quickly. In fact, tonight, in the timeline that I came up with, if we decide when we're going to open up the windows for the article submissions from the different departments tonight, and have them do sometime in the ballpark of August tenth through the twelfth, we'll be able to review that warrant, a draft version of the warrant on August seventeenth meeting. And then from there, we'll actually call the meeting on August third. Like I said, review on August seventeenth. I would send the warrant off to council. That can also all happen on September eighth, if we prefer. September twenty-first, we'll be able to finalize everything, and that will allow us to have the meeting anytime, essentially anytime in October.
So just so everybody understands, we usually have our special town meeting at the end of October, but due to the presidential elections beginning in October seventeenth, our, Jackie won't be available, and Michael Q won't be available, so we'd have to do it a little earlier. The only thing that I want to make sure is that we have, and I'm not sure how that's going to affect us, is if we have our free cash certified by that time, that would be the only question that I would have, and that would be a quick question, because we would need to have that certified before we.
Yeah, change it in like late September or October.
Yeah, so that's my only, cutting it close, so I'm not really sure, especially this year being such a weird year with the state. I'm not sure if we're going to have our funds certified. So again, though, we try to stay away from monetary audibles. A, we don't know what we have for money. B, we've taken care of everybody's budgets already, so this mostly would be for any wording changes, any bylaw changes according, you know, according to any of what the department's needs are. So I'll open it up to the board for, I mean, we could open it tonight, July thirteenth, as recommended by Tim, and go according to his schedule for now. Yeah? You go with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Tim? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to to have this scheduled set forth by the, by Tim, our assistant. According to his schedule, the town meeting would be on October third?
We can discuss that in a minute.
Okay, we'll wait then. All right, do you have a motion to approve? All right, yeah?
Yeah, question.
On favor? Aye. Okay.
The nice thing about Tim's schedule is that as long as we get everything done by September twenty-second, we can do it anytime after, just need that fourteen days.
I can push it into the.
Yeah. So it just gets us on track.
Okay, update from the treasurer on revenues?
I didn't get anything from her on that, that's my fault. It sort of fell through the cracks, and I just haven't had a chance. I'll have a report from her at the next meeting.
All right, update on the town hall phone system.
Okay, we did have a discussion with vertical communications. As you well know, we, at the last town meeting, actually going back to here at this point, had received money to upgrade the telephone system in the town hall. uh, had, uh, received money to upgrade the telephone system in the town hall. From a, basically the analog, uh, POX line, copper line type of system to a voice over internet protocol system using the internet as our carrier. Uh, we are in the process, uh, in February of working, we had dates all set up and everything. In, at the beginning of March, to actually do the install. And then, uh, we had a situation with COVID. Uh, as a result of that, we, uh, we just basically put it on hold because we didn't want people in the building, but we didn't know if other people were, uh, people were still coming in and out of the building. So, uh, we did have a discussion last week with Vertical. We're looking at an installation date of August seventh. It's going to be a Friday, they're going to come in, set the phones up, do the, the switch over and we should be good to go.
Okay. Um, Tim, can you add this to, um, our, thanks? And can you add, um, the treasurer on to that as well? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll have something for that.
Thank you. Um, approval of minutes from June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty? Do you have a second? Alright, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, town administrators report.
Alright, um, let's, uh, okay, uh, just to let the board know, um, I have been contacted by United Way. Uh, they want to, uh, have a pop-up market at the, uh, Free Town Elementary School. Uh, I've been working with the superintendent and, uh, with, uh, Gene Fox and, and with Selectment Pacheco, uh, in the past when we had these. They're planning on holding two of them, one on July twentieth and the other on eight twenty-four. It's a great program, it allows people to buy fresh produce and, and, uh, foodstuffs, uh, at a reduced cost. And it benefits a lot of the families right now that are experiencing hard times. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, last week regarding the reopening of the library with, uh, Paul Sadik, who's the chair of the library trustees, uh, uh, and with the librarian. Uh, we're planning on doing, starting the curbside, uh, opening of the, uh, library this week. Uh, I had Jeff on the call, we needed to do some physical changes to the building. Actually Derek was on the call also. We're looking at doing a, a hard opening on, uh, uh, July twenty-seventh, uh, by opening it to residents. We don't think this is going to be a large capacity and be able to be in there at any one time, maybe two or three people in staff. But at least the building will be open and it will be able, people will be able to go in and, you know, physically look at and pick out books and, uh, use the system the way it was meant to, to be used. Uh, I submitted the letter to Mass Development, uh, regarding the Free Town Screw Property. Um, I got some feedback from, uh, Mary Ellen De Freos, who's the project manager, she said it looked good. So at this point, uh, we'll just wait, uh, the thing she did, uh, ask of me was that, um, I get her the information on when we are going to do the tax title sales so that, uh, uh, she can at least be aware of when that's happening and what the outcome is. Uh, I got an email from, um, the Jeremy Spittle from, uh, Senator Roderick's office regarding a transportation bond bill. I sent it out to the board members, uh, for suggestions. Selectment Pacheco had suggested that we request, uh, money for the boat ramp in terms of resurfacing the ramp, putting a fence up, a kiosk, and some type of a boat washing. I don't know if that's a machine or whatever, something, I, I don't know. Um, so I had forwarded that along to Jeremy and he has, uh, actually forwarded that on to the senator. Um, if any of the board members have any additional ideas that we're interested in pursuing, you should let me know so I can then forward those on. The time is getting short on that, so if it's still in the next few days, you could probably still get it, at least as part of the, the discussion. If not, uh, then it will have to be something that'll wait. Uh, we got notice, uh, from DOT on a grant program. It's a, um, it's a program that's, uh, it's a fast-track program that the state is promoting to, uh, help, uh, businesses and towns regarding, uh, sidewalk, uh, in business, you know, how a lot of the businesses have restaurants and they need the extra space to, um, uh, put tables and things like that. And, and, and the other thing is social distancing, that, uh, you know, in, in terms of pathways, it need to be expanded in order to accommodate social distancing. So there's money there, I want to say it's from thirty to three hundred thousand dollars. I sent it out to the board, uh, and I, I also spoke to Chuck about it. Chuck has some ideas and he's been talking to, uh, to, uh, Jim, a gentleman from GPI that would handle the bridge, uh, about a project for a sidewalk, uh, from the South Bean Street Bridge up to High Street. Essentially beyond that. So I don't know, that's one of the projects that the board has, something else they might be interested in, they should let me know. Consonating freezer is, uh, almost completed. We have one more, uh, electrical connection that has to be, uh, taken care of. Not until the system is operational, if underway, I'd want to take a look at it. Uh, you know, Jeff did a, a great job along with Andy DiGamo, uh, in basically, uh, handling the project and making sure that it got done. We were able to get the grant monies for it from both, uh, Mass Office of Tourism and from the EOE Day. Uh, I have a departmented meeting scheduled for July sixteenth, which is Thursday, just to let the board know. And finally, we had a discussion, um, uh, late last week regarding the special town meeting that's going to be held for the continuance of the, uh, Lake District. And, uh, it's, the whole thing is, I'll be honest, it's kind of problematic because we're not quite sure how, uh, we're going to be able to handle the anticipated crowd. At the last meeting, we had it indoors at the elementary school, we had a hundred and eighty-five people. Uh, the question then becomes, how do you do that indoors with social distancing? We talked about the potential of having it here, um, at, uh, camp, Cathedral Camp, at, uh, outside at Aponequit and, uh, at the baseball field down at the Narrows, the Bay Shore. Uh, all is potential areas to have it. We didn't have any decision made, we're still trying to grapple with how we're going to do it, is, you know, I, I, I know that Mike was going to have a discussion with, uh, Jim Sashia to see, you know, in fact, they were meeting the night that we had the meeting in the afternoon, so I'm not quite sure how that all ended up, but I know that, uh, it's going to be a challenge, it's going to be probably more of a challenge than the, uh, annual town meeting. So we, we've got a couple of weeks to really figure that out. We discussed tents and what I understood from Mike's discussion was that the tents are anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars. So I don't know where we're going to get the money to do that. So there are a number of logistical obstacles that are going to need to be addressed before we can actually figure out how we're going to hold that meeting. Just to give the board the heads up. That's it.
Okay. And you guys have any questions? George? Okay. Alright, uh, moving on to, I have nothing on the, uh, police station from the last time. Um, board, board of health, I'll turn it over to you, George.
Okay, uh, you'll have some issues out there, I, I don't believe it's resolved. Uh, what is the mattress situation right now?
Uh, two dumpsters left last week, uh, we got a couple more going out this week. I'll tell you some.
And so they've all been gone by?
Uh, as soon as they can, uh, I was hoping to get one more than two out last week, but that's all we were able to get out, so.
Okay. And what is the grant situation?
Uh, we're all applied, no, we're just waiting for, uh, to find out.
Uh, okay, okay, last, last meeting, we discussed the cash register system, the tracks, uh, basically sales of the, uh, transfer station.
I did talk to Jessica about, uh, the cash registers because the question that we had brought up was can we link our current credit card system to a cash register? I talked to Unibank and he can't. They don't sell a register that's already linked and they don't have the technology to take what their system is and link it to a cash register. So we can do a cash register that would track the cash and the checks, but it wouldn't include the credit card system.
But are, but the, we do have a credit card system.
The credit card system's there, we just, the discussion had been, can we get a, a credit, a cash register that can link it all? We can do all the cash, we can do the credit cards through it, and we don't have that in place. We could still accept the credit cards and the cash and the checks can be run through the cash register.
And the credit cards do not be able to run through the cash register at all? You couldn't enter a key in somehow?
I, that's, I asked Unibank and they said that they don't have the technology to link it in.
I'm really surprised at that. But I did talk to some company, one company that claimed they can do that.
I, I have nothing to do with Unibank, that's who the town uses, that's who we have in the town.
And that's what Jessica told me.
No, I talked to Unibank itself.
Well, let me ask a question first. How do you feel about doing this and doing more research on that?
So I, I definitely think that we need a cash register, not only at, um, at the transfer station, but we also need one at the boat ramp as well. So I would, I would propose to make a motion to approve getting cap, two cash registers, one for the transfer station and one for the boat ramp. That would be my motion.
Do you have a granted? Want to tell us?
Aye. I think it's a start.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to do a little more research.
Yeah, you can.
Mostly sort of credit card fees that Unibank, uh, Unibank is our bank.
That's who we have our credit system set up for.
These are the credit cards, they do a lot of the municipal bonds and they're really big in the municipal finance area.
Well, maybe we can talk about that, David, if you understand the system.
I'm sorry?
Maybe you and I can talk about that.
Be happy to.
And, uh, on the security cameras, uh, how do you feel about the use of those?
Um, I don't, uh, who do we have up there now?
We have one camera that's on the main, uh, it's on the trailer and it catches like the front of it, catches the dumpsters.
What does that hook up to?
It's hooked up to the, it's like a recording system that's inside the, uh,
Is that the original one?
That's the one that was installed previous to make it through. It's not as old as I originally, I thought it was about ten years old, it's actually more like five or six. So, uh, where I, I got the manual to it, I was at, we have, I think, two or three more hookups that's on that DVR system. I originally thought that we were talking somewhere in those ten plus years and it was too antiquated to even bother. But now that I know it's like five, maybe six, I'm going to try to reach out first to them, see if maybe we can just get a couple of cameras and then we already have the existing hardware there, we can just tie into it. Um, it's borderline on the age, we may be looking at getting a new system, but I wanted to at least keep that option open.
I mean, when we, uh, had a need for it, uh, the, uh, I don't know if I can work for it, the resolution was not great and there were things that we couldn't see. There were some questions about certain things. And I know that resolution has, it wasn't that good. And then the other piece is that, uh, we have a recorder that's in the building. And if anything happens to that recorder, you lose everything. So I think it'd be better to have it in a cloud or, you know, with the company that you buy a new system from. That would be my recommendation. It'd be a low price here, but these systems have a low price in these days. By my recommendation, we could go out and get a new system.
I, I really don't think we need more than two to three cameras. I think if we, if we strategically place them, I would say up to three. We strategically place the three cameras, I think we would get ample coverage.
Alright, I, I'm going to make a motion to have Derek, George and David bring forward, um, a proposal for the next meeting for three cameras at the transfer station. Um, whether it be a new system or whether we can work with the, the, the existing system, whatever the three of you deem is necessary. That's my motion.
Thank you. Want to tell us?
Aye.
Aye.
Town and beach fees and signs, go, do that.
Look, the fees are, it's a residential sticker, so that's thirty dollars. Um, you can get a non-residential sticker, it's thirty-five. As far as monitoring it, um, it, it's me, there's not anyone else that monitors it, so it's a challenge.
We did include in the package, just for the information of the board, uh, a break of the, of the fees we have been collecting. So if you want to get some idea on, on the amount of money, the print is kind of small.
No, I, I got it, um.
Uh, and we also called around a, a couple of communities, I didn't want to read all of these, but if you want to just pass around that. About other, how other communities were handling it, I'm sure this is not a end-all-be-all kind of situation where this, you know, these are the dependent of communities, there might be other communities that are handling it differently. But we were just trying to get a sense on, you know, what, uh, you know, whether we're, you know, number one, collecting enough money, adequate, an adequate amount of money, and number two, uh, whether or not the difference between the resident and a non-resident, uh, should be raised. We talked about it at the, at the last, particularly for the beach.
Have you visited the beach?
How do you go monitor a long time ago and why?
The, the town sticker is tied in, the transfer station and the beach are the same sticker, so that price is up to thirty. When we did the price change with the transfer station, we did up the price of the sticker, but we actually didn't do anything on the non-resident side of it when it came to the beach and their sticker. We did come up with an idea of that day pass that a non-resident could use at the transfer station, but we, the conversation actually didn't go to the beach. So that is something we could look at and, and is raising the price of the non-resident sticker.
Or have a, to have a day pass too, and, but to actually.
We haven't, that's something that could be discussed.
Yeah, probably.
We need, we need to have someone there to facilitate.
Right, and.
So that's a whole nother.
Okay, right now, it's, it's me. Uh, we have, uh, now that we've lost Mark, we don't have anyone to go down there and clean it up. I asked Highway if they could go down last week. Uh, I went down last week, um, and monitoring it, it's, it's me.
So one of the things, just on monitoring, like, I know some of the points we heard were jet skis are being put in the water there, things of that nature. Do you think it's something we could maybe work with, like, the environmental police? To see if, if, you know, are they allowed to write tickets, like, for people that are there without, um, permits? On our behalf, on the town behalf, I'm not sure.
I would, I would think the environmental police would be, once they're on the pond, I think that that's what they would hand.
Yeah.
It's on private property or if it's on town, you don't know if they have jurisdiction.
No, I, I think they buy environmental police, once it, once it hits the water, then, then they would be involved.
Yeah.
Or, or if it's still on the land, and I think that's more local.
Yes, there is a situation over the weekend where a resident, uh, had people, uh, using jet skis and using their dock.
The boat, the boat ramp and the beach, like, the issues almost kind of tie into each other a little bit. Like, the, the boat ramp, it's, I have somebody up there on Saturday and on Sunday, and that's it.
So let's, I think we should take these in two separate, two separate parts because I think the boat ramp is easier for us to put rules in, you know what I mean? Because once the boat ramp reaches capacity, you need to shut that boat ramp down. We cannot be letting people drop off their boats and they'll pop somewhere else. Like, that is a, that is a no, no, and no. Because A, it controls, um, how many people are actually on the pond, which is something that we really have to start taking a good look at. I mean, um, and B, like, that parking lot is for the size of that pond on our section, you know what I mean? So I think that once, once that gets to capacity, they need to shut that down. They cannot let somebody just drop their boat off. A, they're not paying for it, because they're only paying to park.
I think what the intent is doing is that if, if somebody's dropping in, then they're making them pay to drop in. But it's not really being enforced as far as once this is full. But it's not really being enforced as far as once this is full, that's it. If somebody's dropping in their boat and they're going to park on the triangle, they're putting their boat in, they're paying to put the boat in, but then they're going to park in the triangle, which is defeating the purpose of closing it when it's full, and it is posted.
That would be a policing action, you know, if somebody would have to say, hey, you can't park on it.
It's gonna, it's gonna take, yeah, that would help, but we also, if we have attendants that have, like, maybe a ticketing ability, like, a little more cachet down there that can really regulate other than just taking money and that's it, that could help too. It could take the burden off the police and on us.
But that would make sense.
Right.
Now, do we actually have someone there?
We have one attendant on Saturday, one attendant on Sunday, and they're...
They just...
They, they do what they can.
Yeah.
They, they do what they can.
That's the beauty of the kiosks, is that you're gonna get money in October or November or, you know, April or whenever, twenty-four seven, you know, because they have to get a ticket, they have to pay for the ticket to get into the, the parking lot.
I agree with the kiosk idea, except it doesn't, the, it, it doesn't help with regulating the parking area. It does help with collecting fees twenty-four seven. You would be making a lot more money down there than what you potentially could. But you still need that enforcement piece that, that just ties that all together. The kiosk is a great idea. I'm all for it. But we, we still need that enforcement piece to be able to monitor it, make sure it's being handled properly, the...
Is that, is that a non-criminal disposition kind of permit? Like, if somebody parked, what is that parking issue?
So Carlton did, Carlton did send us two, um, examples of the violations and...
That's all I'm hearing.
Yeah, I, I think they're kind of restricted, um, or restrictive. Um, so it doesn't really allow him a lot of leeway, um, which I think that we could change. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure how you go about doing that. You know, an additional, um, offense should be listed on here. Um, that's something that is a question for Carlton, not, uh, you know... And really, like, are we gonna rely on the police department to just, like, watch over that twenty-four seven? When there's so many other things that they're, that they're working on, like, that's hard.
That's always been the issue, really. It's like, are we gonna have them down there being, you know, watching the boat ramp to take care of the front?
Now, what happens if they just go by there randomly, whenever they're in that part of town? And if they give out tickets, once again, randomly, maybe the board gets around them.
Yeah.
I agree. It's gonna take a, a good year of strict enforcement before people recognize that this is something that we're taking seriously, that the town has taken seriously, so, um, I think...
Now, now, could we talk about, like, upping the, from a twenty-dollar fine to, say, a hundred-dollar fine? I mean, if you have a boat...
Right.
You know, a twenty-dollar fine is probably not gonna change your behavior very much.
Nope. It's like here, here's my parking fee, right, you know?
Yeah, I mean, twenty bucks is probably cheaper than parking at a lot of other private places, you know?
Mm-huh.
So I'm not sure what we'd do about that, but...
I, I would totally agree with something like that, um, upping the fine. So I think that what we need to do is see how the, these have, like, D C fines, a hundred dollars each. We would have to add something in there, um, and I don't know, I, I'm not sure of how you go about doing that, so that's something, um, that I would, through the Board of Health, um, share, make a motion to have David, um, at the next meeting come forward, um, and talk to Carlton with some suggestions on how we increase these fees and, and what is the town's responsibility, how we go about doing that. So I'll make that as a motion.
Got it.
Want to say yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, in the meantime, though, I do think that, and I don't know how you guys feel about that, um, you need to, like, just have a meeting with your staff, the boat ramp people.
Yep, or a meeting.
Okay, and I think that we need to have a sign put up posting, like, you know, max capacity, X amount, blah, blah, you know?
It's, it's posted on the, on the new COVID sign that we put out there with the COVID rates, it's number two and number three. Once the water is full, the, the rear of us goes.
All right, and I, I think that we'll probably see the num- the, um, the amount of money that the town gets go down, because we're not letting everybody do that. So that's something that we have to weigh out. But I think that, um, taking some of that money that we make this year and putting in the kiosk beginning in May of next year, so we'll have all winter to work on that. And say, May first, when the season's open, those kiosks are ready, and I, I think that that's probably a good way to go.
And, and it's the monitoring piece too, and, and the monitoring piece goes for the boat ramp and the beach. If we, we need, we need to have that person that can actually get down there, monitor it, be able to issue a ticket if, if need be. That doesn't need to be a police officer. It can be code enforcement under the Board of Health.
So...
That's what I was, I was looking for a ticket. It's not, I, I just took a look at the ticket. That's a police ticket.
Right.
There's the non-criminal, uh, uh, disposition kind of thing that we might be able to stay.
We just have to make sure that we have teeth in it.
That way, anybody could issue. The legal inspector, Board of Health could issue it. It wouldn't have to be a police officer.
Like, what happens if they don't pay it?
Right, there's no...
Well, it doesn't pay, if they don't pay, then you file an action and just...
And then, and then it ends up costing us maybe more.
Yeah, we're not gonna go fight.
I mean, so like, I, I, like, if Carlton has some ideas on how to increase the fee and what we can do about that, then, then I think that that, that we can, has more teeth than, I mean, I would love, it's just like the littering, right?
Start telling people.
How do you, how, what do you do? Right, right?
How about, um, if they legally park there or whatever, having tow?
Right. I hear you. Not, they won't do it again.
Take some big equipment too, you're telling them, boat trailer and a boat?
Yeah.
That's a pricey tow to tell them.
They didn't have a lot of boats docked on the Town Beach.
Yeah.
Well, that's another thing. So, so let's go back to, all right, so now we have some of the issues that we talked about settled for the boat ramp, but let's talk about the beach. How much money do we have, um, set aside from our revolving account? And can we get somebody there for the weekends to monitor? Do we have enough money for the weekends to monitor the beach?
I'd have, I don't know.
Okay. Can you have that for us at the next meeting?
I'll grab you a paper, yeah.
What do you think?
Yep, I agree.
You good?
My, my guess would, would be... So that would just be the money from the boat ramp, pretty much, right? My guess would be probably not. I would say, I would, I don't know. I could be completely wrong, but my guess would be probably not.
All right, let's find out and see how much money, because it's not only from this year, it's the years prior, so I don't know what's in that fund.
Oh, well, yeah, if you already have many years prior, you have a very long...
Right, so what's in that fund, and can we take, redirect some of that money and put it towards a monitor at the beach just for the weekends? Say, like, from, I don't know, eight to five, something like that? And then that way, that'll cut down, especially on the weekends, from people dropping off their jet skis in the water. And then trash, and then, you know, it doesn't have to be a lift there, it just has to be somebody there, and then we can do that one-day pass. If they don't have, if they don't have a sticker or they're not buying a one-day pass, then, you know, bye. All right?
Well, good.
Okay. All right, are you all set? All right, personnel.
All right. So first, the appointment of new senior librarian. Um, we got a recommendation letter from the Board of, Board of Library Trustees. Uh, so this is gonna be pretty Normandy, Norman, something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, from library tech to senior librarian, uh, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment as recommended by the Board of Library Trustees.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can you also, uh, vote to approve the change of status as well?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status as well. Give it a second.
Second, good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, we have three additional appointments. So it's, um, Alfred Barrows, uh, to the Council of Aging Board, is effective July thirteenth, today. Uh, so we also have a letter here, um, requesting the C O A to appoint this, uh, full of statements.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, um, the appointment of Alfred to the C O A.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Keith Mello to the Conservation Commission, effective July thirteenth, Thursday.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we have Deborah Robbins, uh, sorry, Deborah Robbins to the Soil Conservation Board. Uh, any questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now this is the appointment by the Board of Second Members, so these are what we need to still, needs to be made going forward.
So these are just, um, yeah, what need, what needs to be approved.
What are these?
It's, it's all the different little committees that are supposed to be on. So I'll make a motion to approve as, um, as written in the agenda by the town.
There's nothing to approve in here. What I was intending is basically have you guys decide, have you guys decide exactly which appointments are which, and then we'll actually formally appoint you guys next week.
But can you put them in a list for us?
I do.
Appalling to...
Uh, those are the already existing ones.
Okay, so you have a routine?
No, because once you guys want to decide what you want to do, and we can do it with them.
There's, there's six that need to be appointed, or, you know, broken up into teams, right?
Yeah, that sounds good, right?
Yeah.
There's a bunch.
I mean, I'm the lone man in the total pool, so whatever you guys don't want.
How about the regional school finance? Do you want to do that, George, or do you want Trevor to do that? All right, you give it a go?
I'll, I'll accept it.
Okay. I don't think, I, I don't know. What do you want to do, George?
What are your choices?
Um, Bristol County Advisory Board, Regional School Negotiating Committee. Um, you know what, Trevor, if you're already doing that regional school finance, you can do the negotiating as well, so you have...
For me?
Okay, um, I wouldn't mind doing priority development. Uh, and then there's Southeastern Regional Transit Authority, Task Force, Law and Bristol County Advisory Board. The Bristol County Advisory Board's a good one, because it's the, the one...
The railroad?
That and, um, uh, all Bristol County, uh, state, um, what am I trying to say? Like, Bristol Aggie, like, all those.
The, um, but, but, oh, colony is a vocational community?
That's a vocational school, but Bristol County, uh, Bristol Aggie is under Bristol County Advisory Board, so... All right, so George is gonna do Bristol County Advisory Board, I'm gonna do Priority Development, Trevor's gonna do Regional Schools, and there's still two open, Task Four, Task Course and, um, Southeastern Regional Transit Authority. You might like the Transit Authority, because it has a lot to do with, um, buses and everything for the C O A. Okay, and then, um, do you want to do Task Force Board?
I'll do Task Force.
Okay, perfect. There you go.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So then this is, uh, the Parson Recreation Committee, when we brought this up. Um, so, now, exactly what we want to do forward, next, like, how do, how do we actually get this in motion?
So the reason why this is on here is because we did bring it up at, at our open meeting and we were talking about things. So now we just have to make a motion to, um, approve the formation of the Parson Recreation Committee, and then, um, kind of like, say, how we want it set up. Is it two members from every precinct?
Yeah, that's, I was thinking that too, because definitely one, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, that makes sense to me. So, um, through the Personnel Board, I'll make, um, a motion to approve the creation of the Parson Recreation Committee, um, and that being two members from every precinct.
Motion granted.
Just call.
Second?
No, I made it, he seconded it, as well.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to have a mission statement?
Yeah, we're gonna work on that in the meantime.
I was gonna say, we could, we could put it out there on the board, see if we might be able to find it.
I, um, I started writing some ideas down, so, um, but yeah, I think that if you guys, any, like I said last time when we were talking about, like, a charter, so I think that let's, you know, and I think that that committee will also be able to, like, formulate what they really want to work on and have some ideas as well. But I think some sort of a mission statement is probably the way to start off with, and then you can go from there. Okay. Go ahead, Trev.
So next is the custodial, um, maintenance hiring process. So I saw this, the person we have up here, how much it will cost, whether to hire somebody internally or use a third-party company. Um, can you have anything on this, or...
Uh, actually, um, I, I have had some preliminary discussions with Jeff, uh, who is our facilities manager. And as you can see, uh, an employee is obviously less money than, uh, a consulting company. However, the unknown costs that you don't see are, are the health insurance, the way you look at it with the family plan, that employee that was twenty-nine thousand is now fifty thousand. If it's a single plan, it's thirty-seven thousand. Uh, you're not, with, with an employee...
David, is that number per year?
That's the overall year. It goes from X amount of dollars, you, you take the, the net, the twenty-one, one-eighty-four, and then you have to add on the cost of the insurance. So that, all of a sudden, that, that's a benefit that you pay.
Wait, oh, you're adding it all together?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And, but the other thing you gotta think about too is that you have FICA, you have FUTA, you have sick time, you have vacation time, you have personal time, you have back fill. So in a, in a real-world situation, it's really not cheaper. But I think that one of the things we get going here is, actually, two things. One is that we have a need for a handyman, person who's also do, can do some custodial work. I'm not sure at this point whether that's a full-time person or a part-time person. But somebody can put the flags up, shovel, uh, town hall up, the police station up. Uh, those are all things that the cleaning company are not going to be able to do. Pick up the mail, do the, uh, posters up on the, on the, on the, on the rotary and, and down on the common. Uh, a whole bunch of little things, and then be able to do handywork, you know, paint, you know, hang a picture, you know, change a doorknob, that kind of thing, change lights. So what I would like to do is, is to explore this a little bit further and come back, uh, to the board with a, 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 a more solid proposal. The one thing that I do want to, uh, you know, I'm gonna give you my opinion here, is that, particularly with the police station, uh, I think we should be looking at a cleaning company. I think that that building is a beautiful building. We want to make sure that that's maintained to the highest level of standard. We don't, like, two or three years down the road, want to be, you know, looking at it and saying, geez, you know... And not that that would happen with a, uh, an employee versus a cleaning company, but, uh, if, if it was a single cleaning person doing, like, like our, our former custodian, that building, the police station building, we could put all of our other buildings inside that building. So it's a big building, so I guess my question would be, is that more, if you're looking at it, just keeping one custodian, is that too much for one person to handle? And how do you get all those other functions done with the same company? So I think we need to explore that a tiny bit more before we make a decision on it.
And so this covers all...
I'm open to what people have to think and say.
Yeah, so this could, so this person that we would hire hypothetically, they would cover all the buildings. The person, the person who's retiring now, it's all, all town buildings, and we have one person for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they don't have the new police station, which is...
Except for the school.
Except, yeah, that makes sense.
So there may be, we may, you know, have that same custodian with all the, like a mark type of person, but then have cleaning company for the police station. That might be a, a way of handling it. I'd have to think about it. Like I said, I gave a talk to Jeff. Jeff expressed some concern about not having the people that do all of the odd jobs.
Yeah.
Who's gonna do them?
Uh, would a, would hire a company and maybe have them a part-time person?
I'm sorry?
Could we have a company for the cleaner and then a part-time person to do all this?
That's, once again, that's, you know, I'm open to all suggestions, if that's something the board, the Director of Board wants to go on. We can build it out a couple of different ways, go back to the board and say, this is, you know, a couple of different options, what do you want to do?
And then, how, how...
At what point, at what point does a part-time person become eligible?
Nineteen hours.
Nineteen hours.
So you want to have, you know, much of eighteen-hour decisions, so that you don't have to stay in bed and...
About two days would be sixteen hours.
He said he'd get the flag up every day, get the mail every day.
Or, or you could do it three, four hours a day, that kind of thing. There's all the little tasks that need to be done, the painting, that kind of thing. Once again, there, there's a whole bunch of possibilities here. What I would like to do is come back to the board with a couple of different options. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep, that works.
Okay, so next, twenty-four, we have, um, so to approve a change in status report for Michael Q., uh, promoted to Assistant Assessor, effective July sixth.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Which brings me to my second, uh, question, is where, where are we going with the assessor's office? And I think that the Personnel Chair should work with the...
Yep.
Town administrator to figure out what's going on in that office, um, and where we're going with that.
Catch up on this.
All right.
Okay. So then we have, um, to accept or, to accept notice of intent to retire from, uh, Lieutenant Steven Abbott as Police Lieutenant, effective July second, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then also accept notice of intent to retire, um, Jesse Brown, Detective Brown, as Town Clerk, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Got a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's all I got.
All right.
I do have one update under old business.
Okay.
Uh, I've sent it out to the board. The, um, Copart's, uh, legal counsel has requested that, uh, basically, they want to have a, a, a public hearing in this type of setting, as we've had, uh, with other entities. Um, you had mentioned that you wanted to speak to, uh, basically Kevin Demarest for the Conservation and Planning Board. He initially said yes. Uh, when I informed him that we want to ask him some questions about solar and Algonquin Way project, uh, he said he was no longer interested in meeting. Uh, last I heard, David was supposed to be talking to Kevin, but I don't know if Kevin's been too responsive to David.
Actually, I did, I, I emailed him last month, he'd be getting touch with the solar. And I said not even about, specifically about Algonquin, but just...
It's not really about Algonquin, it's just about solar in general, and solar in a residential area, and what can we do to prevent things like that from happening in the future? I think that was, we, but that, that...
On that off, on that off.
All right, that, that other ship has sailed, because really, I mean, uh, we have to try to, um, help those, um, that neighborhood as much as we can by making sure that, um, all the buffers are here too, and everything that the Planning Board set forth to do are really being taken care of. That's the only thing that, that we can do, this board can do, to help that neighborhood out. But in the long term, I think that, you know, we really need to take a hard look on how we're gonna allow solar to come in, um, and how we're gonna do it safely, and how we're gonna keep it out of residential neighborhoods, so no one has to go through that again. That's, that's the only reason I, I thought we wanted to talk to him. I didn't think we wanted to talk to him about Algonquin Way. So if he can relay that, that would be great. Again, though, we have a lot of questions on Copart, and the Planning Board is the only one that has the answers to those questions. And I'm sorry, but I, I can't have a public hearing, or I don't think you want to have one, or you want to have one, if we don't know what we're having a public hearing on, about the answers from the Planning Board, so that's, that's why I'm...
But I think their, their argument is, in terms of their responsibility, um, they went through the permitting process, they did the site plan review, they've granted it was a by right use. So now they're looking at us and saying, well, we really don't have anything to do with the awarding of a Class Two license. And, uh, you know, that's strictly within the proposal of the board's structure. But I think they could give us some history.
Right, I think they need to give us history, and I think they, I want to know what was their approval process? What, you know, what did they look at? What didn't they look at? What are they leaving out? Like, just to make sure that we're not in another situation that we can't get out of again.
Yeah.
Or we're not making decisions without any background, um, and, and knowledge about what we're making a decision on. That's the only reason I wanted to...
The scope, the scope of the board's authority is going to be strictly with, with the Class Two licenses.
Right.
You can only, you can regulate the hours of operation, you can regulate cars, you can re, regulate probably, um, you know, the visualness of the property from, that might even be a site plan review. That kind of thing, where you, you, you can, you, you know, they have a right to use that property for that purpose, so it's a question of now the board awarding a Class Two license. If it was a Class Three, a junkyard, or Class One, it might be more flexible, yeah, I don't know, but I'm hearing it's just a Class Two license.
When would the board like to have this discussion with Kevin?
ASAP.
ASAP? All right, I'll try to set that up. Uh, do you have a date in mind for when we want to, might want to have this public hearing? Or do we want to decide that after we talk to Kevin?
Yeah.
When are you coming back?
Uh, I'm only gonna be gone next weekend, or from this Thursday, and I come back on Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
So...
So we could possibly have, like, a meeting maybe Thursday?
Yep.
And it doesn't have to be, like, a, a big meeting, it can be a Zoom meeting too. I mean, if it's only the three of us and Kevin, a Zoom meeting would be fine, right? So let's do a Zoom with Kevin, um, anytime, uh, after Trevor gets back. But check with him first, or check with Trevor first, and whatever's good for him is probably more than likely gonna be OJ with us.
Okay, I do have one more thing.
Yeah.
Uh, the, we were supposed to have a, an appointment for the Vacancy and Water Sewer Commission today, uh, but we, when we were conferring exactly if it was a joint appointment or just the Board of Selectment, uh, we learned that we needed to post it a week in advance, so we couldn't have that tonight. So we've contacted the Water Sewer Commission, they're looking to do it as soon as possible. Uh, given that Trevor's not available, uh, next Monday, are you guys available next Tuesday sometime to have a meeting?
Why can't we just do the Kevin meeting and the...
Do that the same time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, same, I mean.
Yeah, same, I mean.
Okay, I'll reach out to the Water Sewer Commission, tell them I'll be happy.
That sounds good, right?
Yeah.
One, one and done.
All right.
All right, anything else? David, anything? Trevor?
I'm also.
George? Motion to adjourn. Oh, so sorry, sir in the blue shirt.
Um, I was noticing the progress at the new police station. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
And I noticed this, um, somewhat appears to be twelve-inch, uh, outlet pipes that seem to be running from the parking, either the parking areas or the, the areas which are gonna be hard surface around the police station. I don't know what the acreage is, but I'm a little concerned because I don't see any pipes going from the police station side of the road to the other side of the road. And I weary, I'm wary as to whether or not that culvert alongside the road can handle the runoff because we've eliminated the permeable soil area. And if the architect or the engineers have looked at that, because it doesn't appear, I haven't heard of anything about a pipe going across that road.
All right, let me, um, find that out for you and get back to you tomorrow. You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.